Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. It is approximately 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We have a fairly brief agenda this meeting because we have some other business in front of the planning board. With that, just a reminder, this meeting is being audio and videotaped consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth in Massachusetts. Joining me tonight, Vice Chairman Scott Bugby, Clerk Jim Leehan, our Town Administrator, Jack Hathaway, and his Assistant Marion Harrington. So with that, I guess our first item of business is a public hearing to discuss Class Three license for Norfolk Auto Repair located at thirty-eight Main Street. And I see we have someone here in attendance this evening to participate, so, so Jack, why don't I turn it over to you?
Sure. So this is a annual renewal for Mr. Roach, and I guess Mr. Roach's son Kevin is here, so he's still Mr. Roach, but I do have a letter from Bob Bullock saying he did an inspection today at thirty-eight Main Street in regards to their Class Three license. I found everything to be in order with the conditions of their license. And that's sincerely Bob Bullock, Building Commissioner and Zone Enforcement Officer. Unless Mr. Roach has changed his business or you have questions for him, I think it should be relatively painless.
No changes?
No changes.
Does it say?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, sir.
Wonderful.
Thanks for being willing to change.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Could we amend that approval or condition of the licenses? He has to stay for the whole meeting?
Yeah.
Take care, Kevin.
Yep, I am. That could be cruel and unusual.
I know. Probably wouldn't want the license.
It's really not worth it. So that brings us to the Town Administrator Report and Action Items. Jack?
Sure. Please consider appointing Kathy Burke of Red Maple Road as a member of the Council on Aging, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. She will be replacing Peter Saltz, who moved out of town.
Some more. Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please consider allowing the restaurants, that's Navado's Restaurant, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, and Eagle Brook Saloon, to extend their hours on New Year's Eve to two AM.
Same check, no issues? There's been no issues.
No, I have not had any issues since I've been here.
Okay. Some more?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please consider reappointing the zoning working committee, term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Members are Ray Goff, Mr. Town Planner, Ex officio non voting, Mr. Leehan. You're not Ex officio non voting, right?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, you are? Good for you. Robert Bullock, Ex officio non voting, Chris Weider from the ZBA, Walter Byram from the Planning Board, Thomas Gilbert, Board of Health, and at large members Peter Diamond and Aaron Hunt.
There is a member left off of this.
What about John Wilding?
They've already been appointed and they don't expire yet.
Oh, John and...
You know, I should know better than to even...
Is that saying what Jane Dooley did too?
Johnny Jane.
The two of them, that's why I changed it.
I should have told you that. I thought that.
That's why I gave you more.
I should have known.
Well, Marion, give your heads up. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those folks who've put in a lot of time here over the past couple of years, so much appreciated.
Thank you, guys.
Yourself included.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read these licenses off?
Let's see, that is the next item of business. So, yeah, please proceed.
Licenses for approval, liquor licenses which will expire December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Eagle Brook Saloon Restaurant, all alcohol. Navado's Bar and Grill LLC Restaurant, all alcohol. Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Restaurant, all alcohol. Celia's Coffee House Restaurant, all alcohol. Four Kicks, on premise, wine and malt. Norfolk Wine and Spirits Inc., package store, all alcohol. Provo Discount Liquors, package store, all alcohol. Linda's Variety Store, package store, all alcohol. Norfolk Food Mart, package store, all alcohol. Jill's Market and Deli, package store, wine and malt.
Some more?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No issues? Everything?
Nope.
Uh, no.
Other than the two we knew about?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for the extension of licenses being expiring here on December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just when you get down, if you get down to the Class Two, I can explain Mitch's just...
Okay. Entertainment licenses, also to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Live entertainment, Eagle Brook Saloon, five instruments, Navado's, single entertainer or DJ. Automatic amusement device, Four Kicks, eleven coin operated machines, Norfolk Grinch Management, three coin operated machines.
Some more?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Common vidic, I always have trouble with these words.
It's a late night.
Victular.
Victular or victular?
I always have trouble, I don't know why, that is such a difficult word. Anyone want to try it?
Victular.
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 Okay.
We got it, go ahead.
Licenses due expire December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Eagle Brook Saloon. Navado's Bar and Grill LLC, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Four Kicks, Celia's Coffee House, Norfolk Town Pizza, Forks Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts Denim Street, Center Ice Inc., Aroma Italian Pizza and Roast Beef Subway, Organic Buzz Cafe and Juice Bar, DS Express Asian Cuisine.
Subway's a separate thing, just so, you know, I'm on my...
Uh, thank you.
Some more?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Should just say food.
Common food.
Class One licenses. Cliff Cycles, LBJ Trailers and Equipment LLC and MPG Motorsports Inc.
Some more?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Class Two licenses. Auto Clinic, Artesian Motor Group, Norfolk Auto Inc., and Mitch's Repair Service. Jack?
So Mitch's are, were just, you know, there's no real concern here, but they have changed hands, so they filled it out as a renewal. They sent it in, you know, just as we got ready to go to press here, so we asked them to, we told them in order to continue business until our next meeting, and they had the opportunity to fill out the form with, it's got more background for a, for a new application, that we would can, we would consider approving them on a temporary basis until January tenth, just with the, with the renewal license, and then on January tenth, he's going to come in and with a full application for a, under the new, it's still going to be Mitch's Repair Service, but it's going to have a new owner of the company, so we would consider that up.
Is January tenth our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
May I amend the motion to reflect Mitch's Repair Service license to pending further approval at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting? The date could change.
Some more?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think we're done with Class Three, right?
Yep, we have.
And the taxi.
Taxi license expires December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, Norfolk Town Taxi Service.
Some more?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We've got a late item from the, was brought to our attention today from the DPW Director. You can consider it if you deem it necessary, it'd be helpful for continuity again, but again, Bob, you know, we could have two options. We could vote it today and then reaffirm it on the tenth or at our next meeting, just to make sure we're, recover ourselves, or you could hold off until the tenth and, and Bob said really, I didn't think that we, you know, chances are there won't be any work between the first and the tenth, but it would be helpful. So what he's asking for is just an extension, to vote an extension of the contract with Jay Hockman from January first, two thousand and seventeen until December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And one thing that he's done in the contract is just lowered the estimate. Originally, the estimate per year spending was up to a hundred thousand dollars. He's comfortable lowering that down to fifty thousand dollars, and Hockman has agreed to that, because we didn't even spend twenty thousand dollars in two thousand and sixteen.
So we only get charged what we spend? It's not to exceed, but we don't have to...
Correct.
Okay, so it's not guaranteed he's getting fifty, okay? That's fine with me, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So the only, the first part was, I only say it because we didn't get it on the agenda, but fortunately, they didn't realize this contract was expiring.
Well, I mean, typically we allow for new business things that come up.
Yeah.
Unforeseen, so...
Yeah, I don't think this is anything that's controversial that somebody would challenge, but...
On the motion then to extend the contract one year?
I'll second. I would suggest that we reaffirm that at our next meeting.
We can do that, that'd be helpful.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
So I have a couple of...
Well, municipal, I want to do municipal thing, I still have the action, I have the warrant approval.
Oh, right, sorry. So I handed out a brief memo that I put together, just, so the Municipal Monitor's Modernization Act actually has about twenty-five pages of items, that probably have four or five items on each page, and they do, it was an initiative taken on by the Mass Municipal Association, strongly supported by Governor Baker because of his tenure as a selectman, and we've already heard from Lorraine that, you know, lowering or changing the recertification process from three years to five years, as it was an important change that happened as part of this act, this legislation. Some of the other things, there are a lot of changes to procurement, like we did about five years ago, there are some changes to procurement, just to standardize. There are a whole bunch of different laws, some that apply to horizontal construction, some that apply to vertical construction, some that are applied just to DVWs, so they, they went through and they standardized a lot of those, so they have the same type of ranges, from zero to ten dollars, you use best practices, ten to fifty thousand dollars, you use, you can solicit three bids, and then over fifty thousand bids, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, you start asking for sealed bids. So there's a lot of, lot of good changes, and you'll hear more of them. Some of the department heads are putting together information and will come to, come to talk to us about things that automatically change and other things that we've had opportunities to, if we want to change, such as this one that I'm talking to you about tonight, Todd brought to my attention, Todd Lindmark from the County Office, and what it does is allows any committee or board to designate a signer for their bill processing, but it also allows the Board of Selectmen to designate one member to sign off on the weekly or biweekly warrant. It's a, you know, as we know, it's all, it's a scheduling challenge for board members. This board actually does has, you know, relatively smooth compared to some, but something like the CPC or the Recreation Commission kind of historically, School Committee historically has a, has had a big challenge, so purpose this bill is that the board, the individual board can assign one person or, and one person and a, and a backup to be the person that comes in and reviews the bills and signs off, or in this case, reviews the warrant and signs off, and then has the obligation to report back to the board at the next meeting. So Todd and I talked about that, we thought at a minimum what we could do is, if you were interested in having somebody do that, you'd sign off on it, one person would sign off, and we would bring the cover sheet from the warrant back for the next meeting, so that you could look at, see what the numbers are, and of course, you know, of course, this, this wouldn't prohibit anybody if you, if you wanted to come in and check the bills every week, you're certainly not prohibited from doing that either. So anyway, just, I think it offers some flexibility, if, if you're interested in taking advantage of it, it's up to, it's up to the board whether or not you want to do that.
I think it's a great idea.
I mean, it makes, it makes sense, right?
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Yeah, I know it's hard on you, because you travel.
Yeah, well, what makes it difficult is by the time the information is ready to be signed, the window is pretty tight, you know, it has to be signed so they can be processed so that people can get paid, so, you know, and so sometimes my schedule isn't accommodating, but you guys have things come up from time to time as well. So, just so I understand, in saying that one person and then subsequent report back to the full, full board, is the idea that it is the same person, or is it that any one of us could sign at any time and then report back to the board? That may be just a subtle point.
No, it's really, yeah, you have three, three bites of the apple, whoever gets it first.
I would read that to say you have to name an individual and then name an alternate.
Yeah, it says, it says make delegate authority to approve payrolls to a member, so...
I mean, I'm okay interpreting it that way, that it's one person.
Yeah, I think, you know...
I don't think it's critical, I think the, I mean, I think the intent is to have one of the members sign and then to report back to the board.
If you didn't designate one person, if it isn't supposed to be a person, then you wouldn't have the need, you wouldn't have the need for an alternate.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was just, otherwise you wouldn't have that need, so I think it requires a person.
And I guess I would ask one more question, I mean, if we designate someone, might we designate the other two as, you know, two alternates? Because there have been times when two or three of us haven't been around and one of us, you know, have been in position to sign. I, I don't know if that's...
I don't see why it couldn't. I mean, you know, again, I don't, I'm not looking at this as a hard and fast, you know, I think the, I think it's, you know, I think it's relatively...
Maybe, if it doesn't save...
Yeah, that's a GM, right?
I guess if that's a reasonable interpretation to do that, I say that's what we do, and that way, all three of us are relevant, just one of us is going to have a primary responsibility, and those of us that are alternates can follow up in the event that individuals travel in the primary.
Do you accept the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
I move to appoint Mr. Bugby as the primary member to sign the warrant on behalf of the Board of Selectmen with Mr. Columbo and Mr. Leehan as alternates.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Are you going to abstain?
Right, abstain? Okay. No, I don't, I'm comfortable, I want to abstain, now, I'm, I'm part of it, I'm right across the street, so it makes sense to be sure of it.
I'm in town most of the time, too.
Yeah, it's appreciated. So motion's been made.
Just second.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Given that he's the primary, I felt it appropriate, but I second the motion. So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. That's actually helpful. Some of the stuff you were talking about, especially the caremaker considerations, it's long overdue, that's great.
Jim, how about a motion for, well, I guess maybe Scott, would you like to make the motion for Jim I to be alternate?
We had that in the...
You did?
I did.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Okay. Christmas the double secret backup.
Yeah. He's leaving town.
Yeah, but he's leaving town.
West Coast operative.
So, I had just a couple of things from my schedule for the last couple of weeks. We, one of the things that also changed in law over the past year that you know about is the public records rules have changed. The still, the rules and regulations are still being put together by the Secretary of State, Secretary of State's office, so we don't know all the answers yet, some of which are intended to go in on January first, but we did, what we have to do internally is designate somebody as the Public Records Officer, and we did that, we appointed Anthony Terry, who's the Assistant Town Clerk, as the Public Records Officer, so he will be kind of our czar and the record keeper and the, kind of tracker on public records requests. So Scott Bragdon and I have been, we met with Anthony and we had a discussion about it. Anthony has drafted up some procedures internally about how requests should be handled. We talked about, you know, if somebody comes in and asks for, you know, what's the budget, kind of a copy of the budget, you know, something of that relatively simple magnitude, we would just handle and, and, you know, not really have the problem, need to document it and track it, et cetera, because it's something that's given right on, you know, without the person, without delay. But obviously, when we get into something that, that requires some research and some digging for information, that's kind of what this, what Anthony will be charged with. It will be his job to find the stuff, but it'll be his charge to, his job to, to track it and make sure that we meet the requirement, particularly the time requirements that we need to meet. So once Anthony, once the state finishes their regulations, we'll kind of match up our regulations to make sure that we're doing all of the, covering all responsibilities that we have, and Anthony will, will share those with you and, and obviously the rest of the town employees.
This was the one that the timing is July first, correct? Twenty seventeen, is it?
There's a, there's, there's two parts to it, yeah, so part of it comes into effect this January and, and then more of it next July. So there was some concern that this was going to, this is, you know, Anthony, and Anthony's been working with, because the, the public records officers are primarily being designated through the clerks offices, there was a lot of concern that this was going to generate a huge volume of new requests, but for whatever reason, the clerks and the people working with the, the legislation that initiated this, kind of, everything's kind of calmed down a little bit, and they don't think we're going to get all some swamp of the requests, so hopefully that's, that'll be, that'll be what will happen.
Jack, let me ask you a question. I know some towns, I know we report everything we're required to report publicly, I mean, it's printed and available, but some towns go beyond that, and they print everything, you know, their annual reports, that, and so on. Is that something we should consider doing?
You have to sign those, I think.
I, I think it would be good if we went through the...
I mean, I'm, I'm a big fan of, you know, getting as much out there as we can.
Yeah, no, I, I don't really, you know, and part of the discussion we had the other day, and this was kind of fed from Anthony and his discussion with the other clerks, was that, you know, the more and more information we get on the website, the better, and I think, you know, we're getting, we're getting, you know, much, obviously with the public records and the open meeting law changes from a couple of years ago, you know, all of our agendas are up there on the, on the website and tracked and you can go back and then look at meetings, meeting minutes are, you know, we still are putting them in the individual committees, individual webpages. I think what we ideally would like to kind of consolidate those as well. I think we, we need to, and this is, kind of mirrors in with Michael Yang, our IP Director, you know, we'd like to, at some point in the near future, we need to consider blowing up the, the town website and, you know, migrating to a newer, you know, two thousand and ten, whatever you call it, whatever you call this decade, the tens, you know, get into a, get an update, is the bottom line. And I think the public records law kind of helps push that along, I'm not just making any jokes, there's more we can get out there, but, sorry, and, and, you know, the same step, I, I don't have any problem putting information out on the, in the annual report too, and I think it would be good, Marion and I talked about that, if we get together the right people to look at it and, you know, we don't want to make it a thirty persons committee, but we get a couple of people together that want to go through the annual report and maybe grab a couple of other towns and, you know, if we...
It's a good idea.
If we're interested, we can, you know, at the annual MMA event, they have a annual report contest, you know, if we want to shoot for something like that, but, you know, we haven't tried to do that in the past, but...
Well, I, I wasn't thinking in terms of sort of, you know, all black or anything, but...
It was a nice black.
You know, I was thinking of some of the requests that we've had, and, you know, it's an open book, I mean, I, I know there'll be some pushback by some folks on some information if it were in a book, so to speak, but it's public.
Yeah. One thing I'm not, and I don't know if this is where you're hitting at, you know, I've talked about it with other towns, salaries, putting the salaries in there, I'm not a big fan of that, and, and somebody said, this isn't my original idea, but somebody, actually the Foxborough Finance Director said it to me, because they have it and he would like to get it out. You know, people walk up and they get the annual report and they just start browsing through and they go, oh, look what this guy makes, look what she makes, you know, and it's, and it's, it's one thing to, you know, look at it in a budget or, you know, to go through the process to ask for it, but to be able to just go through a book and kind of look at what, you know, two to three hundred people in town make as a salary is, it's just, it's a little unnerving. Again, I agree with you, it was public. When I got hired, my, you know, my finance director, my article was written and my, my salary was in the paper that day, you know, that was a little bit of, you know, a little bit of a shock, but it was, I got used to it.
Yeah, that's what works.
So it has to, if people requested, they have the right to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I only thing to say is like, you know, because of the article, I think was, Harold did that thing now, but you, you go into, I, I, I frequently on the state of Massachusetts, you can look at every single state employee's, just by putting their name and you can look at everyone's online.
Yeah.
So I guess because you're a municipal, a town employee, it's not online like that, but it's, you know...
Well, if, if the Herald requested it, they certainly could add that to their database. I've done the same thing, I've looked at, you know...
It's quite interesting.
See those UMass professors?
I wasn't so much, I wasn't so much thinking about, it did come to my mind.
No, I know, and some towns have it, I'm not, I don't know, it's public information.
I wasn't so much concerned about having it in a book that, you know, because only twelve people take the book anyway. I was thinking, you know, shouldn't that information be online?
I think those are just for Jim.
It's worth, and I know there'll be pushback, and for good reasons, I understand.
Yeah, it's just, you know, you know, and again, I'm not...
They could publish myself.
People, people have asked, I've answered the question a ton of days, you know, somebody asked me, what should I make? I answered it a ton of days, but...
It is weird, I mean, I guess it's different between public and private, which is, I mean, I assume, I mean, it's, no, it's nobody's business, but it's because they're money, it's their tax dollars, so I understand it too.
It's different.
And again, and, you know, it's, it's different for me, me than a lot of the other employees, I mean, again, I...
Yeah, you're...
People should be critical, you know, I mean, I didn't realize I, I should have a target, you know, I'm the chief administrative officer, so that's, so this is not about me, but this is about every, you know, the, the average DPW worker or the, you know, secretary of the police department or whatever.
It's, it's also misinterpreted in many instances, you know, especially when you get into police and fire, where you've got details and other considerations that, you know, you, you look at someone that says, well, gee, they made X, but they don't understand that he worked a hundred and twenty hours, you know, to get that. So it can, it is, it's got its pros and cons, but it is public.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be my only discussion I'd like to have about that. I was just reading something in the paper, and I forget what dealt with, whether it was something relative to unions or something about removing a restriction on employees being restricted from discussing their compensation with their fellow employees, so it's like the opposite of, you know, what we're talking about in terms of confidential information or what have you, but I just read it the last couple of days. I'll have to go back and look at that article.
I know there's been a lot of, I thought you were going to go down and talk about the non-competes, but, because I think some of that...
No, I wondered about non-competes, but, yeah, is it, is it, are they taking another look at non-compete?
Well, they were, it was a few months ago, right?
For some flexibility and such.
That wasn't just union specific, right? That's just mass law, right?
No, yeah, it's just Massachusetts, I don't think it's uni, I don't think it's unions.
It wasn't, as far as I understood, but...
I used to, I didn't have one, but a lot of people I worked with had them. Okay, we had a long, Jim actually joined us, David Luca came in on the other day, just the other day, just uh as he does probably every other month now, um to be with the property heads, talk about many legal matters going on. And uh um Jim came in to talk about Southwood, which we'll get to in a second, but uh before that, we talked about Stop and Shop and and that went longer, and so Jim joined us for that. Um.
It was a long morning.
It was a long morning. So, you know, we're still working with uh um on the sewer treatment plan, we we still have not collected funds from Stop and Shop.
I thought we were gonna turn off Walgreens, that was my idea, because they'd go back to their parent company, right? Because you're not gonna get any.
Well.
Well, Walgreens is an open, I saw in the shop.
I know, but they are like a tenant or something like, right? I mean, there's no way to force them, they're not gonna get paid.
I don't have my, I don't have my fancy color chart, but.
I know, I know it's convoluted, right?
You know, this is, this is the commercial district and and the wastewater treatment plant is there and serves it, and then so they, when they first carved it out, they got the condos and commercial. And at that time, two easements, uh maintenance easements were created between the wastewater treatment plant and the condos to to give them twelve thousand of the thirty thousand gallons of capacity, in exchange for they would pay for forty percent of the operating costs of the wastewater treatment plant as soon as the treatment plant came into production. Similarly, similarly, like common picture, um the commercial.
That was a picture.
The uh commercial partnership, the commercial property, kind of the lower section here, which was all one parcel at the time, um well, different lots, but all one ownership, um that was between um Eastern Development, which is related to Stop and Shop and and the wastewater treatment plant, which was Borelli at the time, um they agreed to get thirteen thousand gallons of capacity, which works out to forty-three point three three percent of the um flow, and then hence they were gonna pay the maintenance, uh the forty-three percent of the expenses uh ongoing. Well, since that time, um first, they broke that parcel up and sold it over to John Cahaly, who owns the where Walgreens and Silas are, and then the empty parcels across the street closer to Main Street. And um we obviously stepped in and took over the wastewater treatment plant, but when we did that, we assumed the Borelli's place in those ma- uh maintenance agreements, uh easements. So um the 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 point of this story is that uh we believe, um and there's some discussion, um we believe that um and and that and Stop and Shop agrees, that they are still liable for paying us forty-three percent, even though they don't own this parcel anymore, they, when they sold off this property, we believe they created an agreement with Mr. Cahaly um to to share those costs based on current buildings at the, at whatever time the build came. But it's it's their obligation to collect that fund, and then it's our obligation to build them, and then obviously their obligation to pay them. So that's what we're working on with uh Stop and Shop's, you know, outside council. And uh, you know, Dave DeLuca's been working with him probably for six months or so now, and uh it's uh not going, it's just progressing painfully slowly. Um but we've, you know, we've told them, we're at the point now where, you know, we need them to pay, um.
How much is owed?
Seventy, about seventy, um more than seventy thousand, I think seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars.
So doesn't that tip into how do we run the business, I mean, if we're not getting that cash flow?
Well, that's what, we're at the point now, well, we had some reserves in the in the fund.
Yeah, we we ended up our own money.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we, well, it's it's reserves from the enterprise fund, so it's not, it's not.
Taxpayer. No, but it's either that that enterprise.
We're we're in a deficit, yeah, yeah, we can't.
That's ridiculous, I say turn it off.
So Stop and Shop, they agree ultimately, it's their obligation, their commitment, what have you, but is anyone saying that it wasn't clearly properly transferred that obligation to, you know, the new ownership, so that that's why we're not getting, and and I'm just wondering where.
No, they're not really arguing it.
No, can I, can I, 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 I mean, I eavesdropped, so I I I thought, I thought there was an agreement that they would pay the seventy-two K. They they agree they owe that.
Yeah, they have, they have gotten that far, yeah.
Yeah, the 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 issue, I thought, was that that the way they're parceling this up between the three landowners is it's a disproportionate component to those two buildings, because those are the only buildings on the parcels of land.
Yeah, so so as we understand the agreement between the two parties is whoever has a building in place will pay like basically a square footage uh charge for the whole, their whole septic bill. So since they're the only ones with buildings, they're gonna get, they're they're potentially gonna get the whole bill, and we and we want, you know, so they're asking us two questions, you know, do, are you gonna get involved in how we parcel up the bill? And we're like, well, no, we want you to pay the seventy-two thousand dollars. On the other hand, we don't want you to put that whole bill on Silas and the massage therapy, because we don't want you to put them out of, you know, we don't want you to put them out of business or or, you know, financially strap them. So, you know, they're 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 being coy, um.
It's a nice way to put it.
Yeah.
Stop and Shop?
They're being typical Stop and Shop, is what they're being.
I mean, this is all gonna come to a head soon, is it, is it not, with the bond here, this whole development and all the roads and infrastructure, the bond.
Yeah, and we did, and we talked about that too, because, you know, Di- uh, you know, they gave us an estimate for the work to be, that needs to be completed, which was about sixty thousand dollars. And they gave that to us, Bob reviewed it and add on, added on another about sixty thousand dollars, because he added on the sidewalk, the cost of the sidewalk crossings and some trees that were uh uh either not put in or trees that had died off, so.
There's also some ADA compliance, things that they need to square away and such, this was, we.
And so they're not.
We reviewed this in in great detail with them, and I don't think they liked the answer that we came up with.
So they're not necessarily balking, but they're also, as Di- as Davis said, you know, three or four times the last couple of weeks, they're they're not, they're not giving us the chance to get get with the decision makers, and I think that's always the problem with having Stop and Shop, is they give us, you know, a.
They buffer us.
Mouthpiece, or a buffer, is a better word, um um so we're, you know, we keep telling this guy Matt, and I think graduated law school last year, that we need to get in with the the decision makers to try and get this resolved, because we, you know, because we're, we, you know, A, we do have the ability, uh according to our bylaws anyway, to to charge interest for all of this, so seventy-two thousand for an average of six months, or, you know, some of it's, some of it's over a year old, um that'll add up. Um plus, we've also threatened them that, uh, you know, we need to get this resolved in uh by the end of, by, I think you said, January fifteenth, or, you know, we gotta look at taking that capacity and 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 bringing it elsewhere, because that's uh, you know, that's ultimately, you know, we need to start generating some revenue for this, for the enterprise fund and uh.
There was, I I I didn't participate in the call because they didn't know I was there and they were on a speakerphone, so obviously I didn't say anything, but my two, I I I would play hardball with them, because I think it's gonna be, they understand. I'd say whatever you gotta say to get the seventy grand. But the last time, the only thing that's ever been proposed for that piece of property right there is a fifty-five thousand square foot.
Yeah.
Stop and Shop, fifty-five thousand square feet, that's never changed, and they've never said it's off the table, never.
No.
So we've reserved a certain amount of capacity for that building, right?
Yeah, which is about four thousand.
Right, so, take it away, either either charge him for it or take it away. Because i- i- if you, I I believe we can do that, can't we? Can't can't we say we're no longer gonna hold capacity for your property?
Which makes it less saleable, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think if we argue that they're breaking the contract, yes, right.
I would look at that, Jim's way, you gotta go that way, I mean, this is taking over, it's crazy.
Yeah, no, but the four thousand, you know, so now all of a sudden.
This whole thing is what, thirteen?
Yeah. So you have to, you know, ob- obviously the best solution is to start getting some development down there, and then we get, you know, then we can start sharing the cost appropriately, um.
Well, you got an owner here that that's, from what I've been told, is that while there's a for sale sign.
Asking prices, yeah.
The asking price is ridiculous.
Yeah.
And you got an owner here that's been land banking for twelve years.
Yeah.
So with that understanding, I I mean, I agree with you, but 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 we don't own, you know, I mean, I've had people come out, why don't you guys develop that? We don't own the land.
We're not doing the business either.
So.
Besides that, don't know what to put in there.
And we're not in the the business, you know, we're not, we're in the business development business, but we're not in the development business, there's a difference. I I I'd do whatever you gotta do to get the seventy-one grand, because we we're, we can't deficit spend this, I mean, that's gotta, you know, but I would.
Yeah, then I would, if it's legally allowed, I would take, we're taking that, we're taking that away.
They will, they will, I mean, you know, I mean, you and I have, I've been to Quincy three times, you know, and three different people.
Yeah, I've met, I've met with them here.
It's it, well, they've been here two or three times, so we've met with them six, eight times, not counting the planning board, and gotten nowhere.
Going all the way back to the mesh. So, I mean, this isn't my strong suit, but if you put a lien against that land and basically threaten that we're gonna take it to auction and sell their property.
Yeah, I, my understanding from Dave is, uh, you know, you can lien water bills, you can't lien sewer bills.
Seems fair, but.
Yeah.
It's utility, essentially, you provided a service, but I would go Jim's route, I mean, just like I said, take away the capacity, because I know they're not trying to sell it, but like you said, with no sewer, that you can't bring it on that side.
That's what we keep going back to, is we take away their their cap, their access to the sewer.
But it's not gonna affect them until they need access.
Well, I know.
But but it decreases the value of their property.
But still, if they're like, yeah, they're like.
I know, I know.
Yeah, so it might not work, it might, it's a step, they might, you know.
Have you got option two?
No, no, I.
I I don't know what option two is, that's my.
So he's, he's, he's sure that you can't put a lien against it? On his case law, what have you, that he's basing that on, I mean.
I think if we, well, I don't, not, based on our bylaws and, you know, the way we operate, he has said no. Whether or not we can, we can adopt a uh another provision that allows us to to lien uh septic.
You should think about that, we're not big septic town anyway.
I mean, it may get their attention.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure they want the negative publicity, quite frankly.
Oh, I don't think they care.
I mean, you know, the other.
I don't think they care.
The plan B, and it's a, you know, it's not a cheap solution, is that, that we do, we take it, take away their capacity and, you know, the the owners, the owners across the street, at least a couple of them are interested in.
Right, yeah, my building was, and the guy wants, he wants sewer.
He wants sewer, I mean, so we have a customer, we'd have to pay for it to get over there, but we charge him a seventy thousand dollar connection fee, we're all good.
I don't know if he paid it up, but he would like it, he probably liked it for free, but, or some kind of cost, because he was happy to get gas, you know, he just saved a lot of money off his oil bill, again, his building gas, above sewer.
Well, yeah, we, and, you know, so we have a reasonable connection fee, and uh and then we, then we get more tax revenue, because he's, you know, in my understanding, as he redeveloped that building, um, you know.
W- w- what I'm concerned about, and I know you are too, Jack, is is these two spots right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying.
This guy's got, what, one toilet, you know, two toilets.
Two, I think, but yeah.
At Walgreens?
Yeah. So i- if Stop and Shop, or whoever is parceling out these costs in the agreement that they currently have, you're gonna, I mean, it's gonna slam these people if they, if they choose to do it the way it's currently structured.
Right, I mean, but you heard me the other day, if they, if they, you know, if this guy, when this guy bought this property and and if that's the deal he made, then you know, but that said, well, we're just gonna build based on uh actual buildings that are constructed. Why say to step into, you know, and protect him from a bad dealing here?
Well, I'm not worried about protecting him, I'm more worried about protecting them.
Yeah, his tenants, yeah.
Uh it it's not him, I mean, he, yeah.
It would be a catch right, truly, right, like, since he's, since he can obviously afford the, ask for high prices on undeveloped land, he must be getting a decent penny from Walgreens and Sila if they were, not that I want him to go to business, and if he loses those tendencies, he's gonna be, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt everybody, right, it's gonna hurt him all quickly, right?
He certainly wouldn't, wouldn't have a desire for any of those three businesses to to suffer.
Well, we sure don't want him to suffer for sewer shit. I mean, um so wh- wh- where are we with it?
Did talk to the Stop and Shop attorney again today, and he uh, we got a message from him, and and apparently he'd been out, when did we talk, yesterday?
Last week.
Last week, so apparently he was out yesterday, he was hoping to hear back from him again today, but as of about four o'clock, he hadn't heard from him. He left him another message today. Voicemail said he was out till the twelfth, so.
It was next day.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll keep you up there.
To be, to be, to be continued.
This is off the top of the list. So the other thing we talked about was Southwood, which uh.
Uh, that was a short, three hour conversation.
Yeah, as you know, we have uh a meeting on the twenty-first with George Malone and um.
George, is this, oh, like, that's scheduled, I thought George was.
Twenty-first.
Not gonna do it or anything, okay.
Oh, they're coming all masks.
Meeting here.
Yeah, they're coming to us.
Yeah, um so we're gonna have a um we're gonna do some more prep for that, I think it'll be tomorrow, yeah.
With the zoning working, what do they mean, what's the?
Uh, just with the attorneys at this point.
They're they're coming, the archdiocese is coming with at least three lawyers.
To do what's the, what's the agenda?
George is coming with his lawyer.
The purpose, to try to get his agreements, you know, the developer agreement finished?
Yeah.
Talk about what the open issues are, I think, is the.
Even though he's gotten a medal ten times and says exactly what you could do, you know, even though we've changed it a lot too, so.
Yeah, it's a.
I, my, this is an opinion, just an opinion, I I think it's a drop dead meeting, I I think that that I think George is coming with the expectation that we're gonna get everything resolved, whatever that is, yes, no, I don't think, there's no maybe, it's yes or no in George's mind, that's my opinion. And I think the decision for that is very dependent on the archdiocese, because if, and and there's a wild card in this, which is, you know, a secondary meeting. You know, we talked about having a meeting in January, you know, a special town meeting, that's not even feasible right now.
Right.
Because it it, we're, you know, nothing's gonna happen until fifth or sixth, tenth of January, and I mean, we're not meeting now, it's been a month since that phone call. So that's not on us, that's on them.
Right.
Um so i- if you go to mid-January before you're even, and I mean, nobody's gonna do much between now and then.
Right.
So it's gonna take the rest of January probably to fine tune everything and whatever, let's let's just play with it.
Yeah, it's, it's February, for sure.
Let's say that we somehow get all on the same page on the twenty-first, there's still work to be done, so so that all gets done hypothetically, the end of January. Now you gotta communicate.
Right, do the whole presentation.
Right, so, there's February, then you gotta go through the whole planning, there there has to be a public hearing, uh you gotta, you know, you gotta go to the plant, you gotta go to the advisory board, I mean, there's a whole set process that's just, is government, it's just the way we do things, so.
Well, yeah, advertise with public hearing.
Yeah, so now you're in end of March, so theoretically, the best you could do is April, well, if you're gonna do April, you sure as heck might as well wait till the first Tuesday in May. Why why would we call a special town meeting in April?
Right, we have our own.
When we got our own annual meeting in May.
Right.
So I I, as I was kind of thinking through this, I I don't be, I don't know how you do this before May.
So did you tell them that, so maybe, nothing, you don't want to have this meeting on the twenty-first?
It's just my thought process, I, it's nothing more, nothing less.
So they don't waste their time coming out, I mean, I thought that, I thought that they were, I thought George was done with them anyway, I figured after his last call he had with them, a couple of calls, that they were, you know, they have a lot, they have many interested buyers and they don't need George.
He's, well, I don't, we don't know that, I I mean, I I have no doubt that George has had a lot of conversation between our last phone call.
Yeah, but I thought they were done with, I just figured, you know.
But they're coming with lawyers, everybody's coming with lawyers.
To me, it sounded like the archdiocese was done, was was done with George at our last call, but George is a good salesman, so I don't, you know, I don't know what I'm not sure, but he's.
Yeah, I was convinced, because the buyer, all the archdiocese wants out, this is get out and get out of the liability, you know, right, and walk away, I would think.
I mean, whatever happens, it has to come back to this board, we all have to approve it anyway, so, you know, I mean, so.
We did talk about, at Jim's request, we did talk about what Dave DeLuca about, you know, can we do this in executive session, um the answer was no, uh there's no, there's no provision for having negotiations with a outside party.
I was trying to figure out how all three of us could attend that meeting, that was the purpose of that question, you know, could we do this in executive session? And we can't, but it, you know, I mean, we're not gonna play games with it, but it's also something you really can't do in a public session.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have, I think the archdiocese will have at least three lawyers, George is gonna have his lawyer, um, you know, that.
Yeah, and then there's other competing, you know, interests in terms of other interested parties in the process.
Are we gonna have Dave, we're gonna have that guy constructed, how about the developer agreement guy, the guy gives the, is he coming too?
Uh, they're, they're, um.
You don't talk about it, since he's.
Yeah, yes, he's gonna.
Attorney from Westwood is coming, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why this came up, in terms of how do you do it, but how do you maintain confidentiality, because you have other interested buyers.
Correct.
Who's George, you know, perhaps.
Gets very awkward.
So, um, okay, so just a question, because, you know, I don't have much experience with the whole overlay district process, I mean, we discussed in terms of.
Unfortunately, no. It's a new ground for all of us.
I mean, to what level of detail do we think we need to be, I mean, we've got the whole issue of communication and effectively reaching out to the community. do we think we need to be, I mean, we've got the whole issue of communication and effectively reaching out to the community, ma- making sure that the residents are aware of what's being proposed, but, well, you know, once we get to that town meeting, special town meeting, whatever the case might be, um, you know, how much of the engineering are people anticipating is gonna be done at that stage versus through the subsequent process for special permits and stormwater analysis and all this kind of stuff, and that's not clear to me.
It's not clear to a lot of people, um, and, or it's clear to people, but it's differently clear to the person sitting next to them, um. There's a, um, it's hard, I mean, again, just as we started off a second ago, none of us have been through this process before, um. You know, and part of this is, is, I look at it as a, as a, as a financial deal, um, it's certainly a planning board process, and it's, and it's a sales, uh, deal. So you have to look at it all three different ways, and, uh, you know, I know the least about the planning process and the engineering that goes into it. Um, I know that some of the, the key components of this financial deal, um, drive how much compensation we're gonna get back for this, um. So, so, so the two aren't, um, distinct from each other, they're connected. Um, and then there's the part Jim already talked about, was, you know, the sales piece, which from my point of view, I would like to see much more information from George to show us what his intention is to build, and I realize he's, hasn't brought in partners yet, so maybe he can't answer that, and that being unfair, but, uh, I look at it as we are making such a monumental change in our zoning, and, and we're talking about fif- potentially fifteen percent growth in our town, that, uh, I would like to know more about what he's, what he's planning and, and whether they're. Um, and we haven't, you know, to my, I'm, my mind, we haven't gotten that information yet, um, you know.
And you, you think Jim is more patient, he's, he's, he believes we're gonna see that process through the planning for a process, so.
I think, I think there are, there are different ways to look at it, I, I wouldn't disagree with anything you say, uh, uh, but I, I think that it's a little more, I see it as more complicated than that. The, the overlay district spells out what is the maximum opportunity on that piece of property. That's, that's the most he can do, he can't exceed anything that is stated in the overlay district. The unknown is what'll actually end up, because we, it hasn't been sufficient testing to validate that he can do the maximum of that development. And, and there are those that think he should do that, and, and, you know, they're, and, and rightfully so, I mean, you're, you're on the planning board, I mean, if you look at uh, Tommy DiPlacido in a development, he does a lot of preliminary testing, a lot of preliminary work, so that when he brings a project in the initial stages, he has a lot of that detail.
Yeah.
To me, there's a distinction between where George is and where Tommy DiPlacido is. Tommy DiPlacido, um, does all of that work knowing that he's moving forward with the project, there's nothing contingent on that. He just has to go through the site plan approval process. George, on the other hand, if, if he spent that kind of money at the front end to do all that testing that Tommy DiPlacido do, town meeting could kill him.
Yeah.
Right on the spot, and, and I would wager you that Tommy DiPlacido would not do all of that work at the front end until he knew that he didn't have, you know, that his project could be just dead as a doornail with a town meeting vote. So I, I think you've got two different sets of circumstances, and, and they're hard to wrestle, 'cause they're both legitimate arguments.
And so what I was thinking is, you know, when we start talking about that design for a town meeting, is that seventy percent? Eighty percent, just to give people some idea, okay, it's not a hundred percent, but, you know, it better be at least seventy, eighty percent that we're approving in terms of what you know, we present, George presents to the residents of the town versus what is ultimately.
I don't know what the right answer is, I mean.
You know, and I, I don't know, but that's what we're dealing with, right? We're dealing with that type of situation, where it's not gonna be a definitive design that he's presenting a town meeting.
He can't show a definitive design, because he doesn't know what he can and can't do.
Right, I still don't see what's wrong, I mean, what's wrong with, like, Jim's saying, the way I, these, in my mind, is, I'm on the worst case scenario, the scenario is X. Again, this, this is the maximum allows, so I could, George could show us some nice three D drawings and pictures, this is, if everything, you know, the, the sky felt perfect, every test pass. This is what the, this is what the district's gonna look like, I'm gonna get my two-twenty, my one-fifteen, my one-twenty, period. Now, again, it comes back, and all I can put up is two ounces, for whatever reason.
He's not gonna do it.
Well, he may have to, he may have to move some things, right?
Right, but I mean, this is.
So that's what I say, is it eighty percent that he, you know, when he presents something, or is it ninety, is it seventy, or what is it? That, I mean, that's where I'm a li-.
We, we, we have no idea.
But he, he should know that.
I don't think he does know it.
But, well, he should know what he's going forward with, and his engineers should be able to give him some idea as to how close he, you know.
Thought again, his dream scenario, if all the right partners, meaning he can sell us all off to the right people, he wants us to do exactly what he said, right, the maximum block, or whatever.
There, there are a lot of, a lot of ways this, I, I mean, if this went the way it should, and I'm only speaking financially, just financially. If it went the way it should go, if it's a financially very good deal for the town, financially, comes with other issues, no question. You've got more traffic on one A, I mean, you know, you've got the Pondville residents, I'm not in any way demeaning those concerns, but, so, I'm just talking pure dollars and cents. The revenue side of this equation, with all those condos being, um, restricted age, you know, it's only the apartments that, you know, you're not gonna have kids in the assisted living, so it's only the apartments that give us exposure to the school system.
Right.
Financially, it's a good deal, comes with a ton of other issues, so, that we have to work out, but, so, the issue is, is that I, I was trying to look at what, okay, what, if this all gets all screwed up, 'cause his money, as he has said, I'm, I'm gonna use his words now, he says his money is in the condos. That's where he gets his upfront money in, in cutting a deal with whomever it is, he, his money is in the condos, that's where he's gonna get the investors, you've heard him say it. That's where he's gonna get, so let's say he, he, and we've tried to work on the phasing, 'cause the affordable component's a critical component to us and all of that kind of stuff. So what's the worst case scenario, do we have to be there at seven?
Yeah.
So what's the worst case scenario that can happen? Let's say this all fell apart, and he somehow manages, and, and the way we've wrote it, that he can't do this, but let's just say he does. He builds all the condos out, and he builds it with their inclusion rate ten percent bylaw, and he walks away, nothing else gets done, hypothetical.
Right.
Is, that, to me, is the worst case scenario. I, I mean, I, I, you know, I.
I'm not tomorrow, we have those fifty-five condos or anything.
Our attorney feels that we protected ourselves against that, but let's, let's just, you know, without going to court, let's say that happens. Could you live with that?
The rest is in Dugop, yeah.
Two-hundred-and-twenty restricted age condos with ten percent inclusion?
And it has its waste, it's been cleaned up.
Waste, waste is cleaned up and the buildings are removed.
That's a big improvement right there, you know.
Yeah, it's a win to me, it's a.
See, I, I, I look at it that way too, Scott, I said, you know, if it all fell apart, and that's what happened, 'cause he's not gonna build the apartments that are, you know, the condos are going first, in some sense, 'cause that's where his money is. That's the worst case scenario. Not what we want, but we could live with it, 'cause it's restricted age, it's another river's edge, is what it is.
Yeah.
That's very nice, and it cleans the site, get the plant.
And it cleans up the site and gets rid of the building, so as Bob Bullock said, he'd vote for it just to get that done.
So we've talked about this in several meetings, you have what you need from Scott and I for tomorrow, I mean, you know.
It's, it's all gonna come back anyway.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, and, and no one on the twenty-first is gonna make the decision, we, we gotta bring it back to the board, and, and it ought to be a, a lengthy discussion as to what happens on the twenty-first. I was trying to figure out a way for all three of us to be there, and I, we couldn't come up with one.
Okay.
Uh, if you could just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Prove minutes on the bottom of the.
Uh, yes, and I.
I was married.
Yeah.
You have, here, October thirty-first, regular session, and November thirty-eighth, regular session, please.
Yeah. Good, we have a new clerk.
Second then?
Motion.
Uh, second, I'll second that motion.
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Couldn't find the dates.
They can adjourn, you're just gonna go down and adjourn there.
Oh, so this meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being continued to.
At the planning board, we all posted for that?
The planning board meeting, one twenty-four.
I'm gonna stay.
Thank you for joining.